Randall, I Angela Hawkins.
I can the Castro.
I.
Matt Mustafa. I'm Stevie.
Here. Um. We made a motion to accept the September fourth twenty twenty fourteen.
So.
Second motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll please.
Joey Anderson.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Angela Hawkins.
I can the Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustafa.
Hi.
I'm Stevie.
All right, motion carried. Moving on, whole business nine twenty five um Anthony Gooden, Gooden's Auto Sales, nineteen hundred Grand Central Avenue. Site plan review for parking lot for overflow vehicle storage.
Good evening. Good evening. Sorry, I did not have much time to submit this earlier on about this process around to have a quickly that. The intentions for parking the vehicles that I'll be working on are in the future.
Yeah. Charlie, can't please.
We're quick.
About four.
Got it.
Well, um you just brought it in.
Yes.
I. You're supposed to bring that in.
My apologies.
No, you're supposed to bring it in because this guy had had to go down to the county for a referral. Otherwise, you're delayed another month. So now you're delayed another month.
I like meeting with you.
Us too.
You said it's finally coming back.
No, you you get part of it. You're tired.
Yeah.
Having some hazard involved, isn't it?
Next thing that's.
Thank you. After I put down stuff as I could have put.
I'll get mail on that.
So what can we do with this tonight? Anything?
Refer it. Site plan review and refer it. And the county.
And the existing site planning.
Yes, all that works.
That's um.
This was from July.
Right. Just picture that.
Was anything sent to the county?
I don't know that on this, not on the site plan.
It was because we didn't have it, yeah. All right. All right, so our. Actually, tonight will be refer the site plan to the county if you didn't get it in a timely fashion. So. Um our only thing we can do tonight is make a referral to the county planning board. The reason we do that is because within five minutes of the county law. And it requires the blessing before we go on any farther with this.
This special permit we held the public hearing right at the last meeting.
Yes.
So you can you can act on the special permit. You just can't act on the site. Did we act on the special permit?
I believe we did.
Good. So this special permit's been issued.
Special permit's been issued, but. So we'll need a motion to refer. The site plan to the county. So. Second. Make one motion second call.
Oh, it's Joe and I'm sorry. Matt.
Good.
Joey Anderson.
Hi.
Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall, I Angela Hawkins, I can the Castro, Matt Mustafa.
Hi.
I'm Stevie.
All right, motion carried. So that's what we gotta do tonight. So, okay, so you got your stuff. We'll see you November sixth for this. The final site. Okay. Next three, do we want to group them and adjourn them all? Make a motion.
Uh look, not three. Uh cardamom. Cardamom between can do. Separately, because that's a different, a a different deal. He has P U D. He's so.
Okay.
We need that. He just needs recommendations. So he's gonna give him his.
Site plan.
His site plan. Hopefully, he gets it in soon enough. Because that's gonna be that's referring to, right? Right? So.
Yeah.
So he's got to get it in soon enough so we can get it down there. Otherwise, he stopped.
And he did send us an email that. Uh he basically uh owning up to the fact that he isn't ready and doesn't have a complete.
Yeah.
Site plan yet.
Okay.
So we're gonna make a motion to adjourn this to the November sixth meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Show me the motion on that, please.
Some of. Second.
Motion second, call the roll please.
Joey Anderson.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Angela Haw. Hawkins.
I can Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustafa.
Hi.
Tom Stevie.
All right, motion carried.
The next two we can kind of do is one, we have to call those, we have to amend our. Resolution calling for the public hearing for tonight to call to reschedule the public. Hearing for November's six, right? Six at seven P M. And to refer their site plans to the county.
Do we have a motion?
Okay.
We do that.
Do it as one motion and then she'll she'll split it. She'll you split. You do it as two, but just do one.
Okay. I move that we amend the resolution for the public hearings for two twenty three. Uh I'm sorry for. Uh four seventy C and ninety six A. Uh we postpone those until November sixth at seven. And I also move that we refer these to the county.
Great. I need a second on it.
Second.
Motion second, uh color.
Okay. Joey Anderson.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Angela Hawkins.
Hi.
Ken Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustafa.
Hi.
I'm Stevie.
Hi.
Moving right along. Um. Right. Number E nine twenty eight. Global solar project for fifty and Resport Road project modification. Nice site.
All right.
This will be as animated as well.
I hope not. Um. So we had taken into account the discussion and feedback um from last meeting. And essentially, we redesigned the project. Uh we heard that, you know, kind of doing the bare minimum to just cross over to this line to include the Radford parcel. Um the board didn't feel that that was appropriate. Um and so we have taken it upon ourselves to redesign the project to make it um. Not sort of like just barely going over this line. So if you.
Well, just just keep in mind, these these are these panels are going away. So the ones that are shading green are no longer part of the part of the proposal. Instead. The panels that used to be here. Are now placed closer to the Radford project. So this this shows both projects.
And so the idea being we're now materially including. The Radford parcel in the global project versus just kind of like, you know, barely coming over the line. Uh with the idea of hoping that this would now uh be appropriate to meet the standard for the the relief from this this interior line. Um and so that's that's our what we've submitted and hoping you can consider that.
Just a couple. Key metrics, the chain ends up being about five hundred feet further away from the western property boundary, a couple hundred feet further away from Breeze Port Road. About twenty percent of the project is now on the Radford project, about seventy percent on the global. Parcel and about eight percent on the Pignataro parts. Now, we kept, you wanted to keep a swath between the two projects because the deer currently move through this area. So we wanted to make sure we kept at least a couple hundred feet of wooded area between the two.
And the what area you were talking about before is down.
Down here.
Down in that other, okay.
The 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 impacts are about the same. We have a little bit more tree clearing just under. Maker, but you know, everything else is pretty much the same. Footprint's pretty similar, slightly bigger footprint, but but substantially further away from the other borders and the road. And substantially closer to Radford.
Yeah, gives additional additional, you got to point out the additional buffer up above.
Yeah, I mean, I had five hundred feet like the lot.
Yeah, right. All these, we were going to be clearing trees here. This is all now remaining as is. And we were, we were proposing some plantings here, but now. But we're filling in this area with those plantings. Um this is sort of an open field. Uh and we're we're preserving the landscape buffer. Um.
It's one of the important distinctions. So we're we're about as close as we can come. So this this like the Radford project. Is about seventy five feet from the property line. So we comply with the setback there. And then this project is seventy five feet from that same property line. So. The non-project parcel line, we we comply with setbacks. The only place that we're requesting relief is for the internal properties.
Is zero in there.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And you have the you have the appropriate. You have the appropriate easements and whatever you need in place contracts like.
Yeah. We didn't get a copy of this. This plan, no, I I I I created this plan specifically so you can see the two. Projects together. You have a project, a plan that shows the global project. So.
Is that logo word up on the top there on East Florida?
Uh this.
No, it's two twenty three.
This is Breeze Port. Okay, yeah. East five of roads are pretty much.
So. More better?
Yes, I. Thank you. Thanks for trade off.
The question, the only question I have is the time when you were talking about this, the difference between a parcel and a property.
Right. Well, that that was just our. Discussion with regard to Radford because Radford has two tax net, two tax net parcels.
Right.
So in.
But you would consider that one of your arguments where last time was is having. The gold project and the record project on one property, we consider the two parcel of one property.
Right, that's right.
And we're still on that same.
Well, we don't, we don't care about the tax. Numbers. We don't care about the parcels. We don't care if there's one or well, parcels. We just care about. They got the Radford property, the other they're they're looking for the zero at the property line between Goble and Radford regard. So what it is. And I I I I'd look at it that they they've made the trade off, you know, for for larger setbacks from. The road and from the other neighboring property at this point in time. Uh so we're not spreading it out. Plus, we've got it more compacted with the uh with the Redford parcels, but I'm looking at it. But that's. Yeah, it's for your judgment. At this point. But the Radford is the one that had two, it has two parcels. Why? Who the hell knows why they want two tax bills, but that's neither here nor there. You know.
The important distinction being is that one time we were asking for relief from. The boundary but. Team two different projects, right? Now we're now we're complying with that seventy five feet.
Yes.
Yeah.
So John legally, it looks it looks good.
I think I think it meets what we what we anticipated and we made it when we made the changes. I do anyway.
So then what we need then is a motion?
Yeah, it'd be a resolution, yeah.
I move.
And we'd be adopting that plan, that plan.
Yeah, I was.
For the, well, it it it's listed under Goble.
Yep.
But it technically be be both at this point in time.
Well, we we didn't change anything about the Radford one, so.
Yeah, what you call the Radford, yeah, this this would be technically.
I think last time you said we approved what's on the Radford, but not anything.
Exactly.
Yeah, so this.
And now it's just, it's just naming it. What, you know, what are we, what are we, what are we talking? We got the, we we probably have. Goble slash Radford and Radford, you know, but you got Pignataro in there somewhere too.
Yeah, and it's it's just the 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 name we chose, the Radford project and the global project. Yeah, the global project is on three parcels.
Yeah.
The largest being. The global pro.
Yeah.
Sort of be global slash.
No, no, let's just use global. And in and in in that we'll have to, we have to talk about the 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 uh. The boundaries because we got Pignataro, we got Goble, we got Redford. But. And that they are allowed, they they we approve the zero. We proved the zero uh setback for where the projects are. In the interest of.
Okay, so.
Impacting the projects.
I'll make the motion that we approve the site plan for nine twenty A gold gold solar project as presented tonight.
Second. Okay.
Motion. Second, any further discussion? She probably put in something about unlisted action, secret, negative declaration.
Yes, yeah.
Say it again.
Unlisted action.
Oh.
Uncoordinated review.
So I actually, aren't these type one actions, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
Type one, yeah.
Type one.
Okay.
And we had submitted a long, long.
Yeah, for each as a type one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, only because of the bill size, the land clearing, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, all the, we we submitted a sort of a cheat sheet for the.
Yeah.
Reform to.
So I'll say accept it as a type one action.
Um we did do that though, right?
Yeah, I think we did it to land.
So. We'll accept that.
The seeker review, I don't think we did.
We haven't done the secret review. They're saying that.
For neither of them.
We didn't because you. Gave us. Yeah.
You gave it.
Yeah. Through the questions or sign the part three.
Yes, we did. Yeah, you did.
You did?
And he left it up to the town, left it up to the board to review your information.
Oh, great. All right. So that's been done. Okay.
That's been done.
For both?
Um.
He gave us both of it.
Yes, yes.
Want to see.
Do you have a, did you make a resolution as to the negative declaration?
That's what I'm wondering. No, we didn't. We did not.
For Goble?
No, we we haven't. We haven't gone through the formal. Part of this, you know, we sent to us and everything like that, like what you're saying. It was sent to us, but we never went through the formal thing of. The boundaries of the thing and and we make the. For the rest. Evolution.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One point three in the short form.
That's for the short.
It's a long form.
One point one except is submitted.
The project.
I didn't have any issues.
I think they, you you filled out a proposed part. We gave a suggested.
Yeah, and a justification for each, and they're all nowhere or.
Minimal.
Minimal, yeah.
I didn't have any issue with submitting, so.
The only thing that would have to be is. It's point three, right, the negative text?
Well, it's a, it's a resolution for negative deck and then the sign the part three.
Yes.
So we need to make a resolution for the Redford project. For the seeker.
Yeah, correct.
As 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 uh suggested by what you had documented and everything like that.
Correct.
Upon our review.
Upon our review, if anybody had any questions on it. What they had submitted before.
I have a copy of those if you guys.
I got my hand.
We vote on it, that town signed it. Well, that'll clear up Bradford.
Right, and then we're at the same.
And then we gotta, then we gotta switch around and go to Goble. Before was the.
Project would not result in no significant ever impacts to the environment. Therefore, environmental impact statement is not needed to prepare a clearly negative declaration issue. That's our motion.
That's not wetlands in the little here. There, that's not a wet one, but this is. So this is, this is both. It's it's not state jurisdictional, it's 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 a wet land. What about it's not. But we're staying away from it.
It's kind of a hard be for the horse, but to get Redford out of the way, we gotta do that.
Make the resolution to accept the seeker as suggested by.
As you know, I submitted and reviewed by the board.
Oh, right.
The part three would go check A for no significant ever symptoms. That would be the same for both. So is there a motion on the floor or no?
I'll make the. Motion. As written by.
As reviewed by the town.
As reviewed by the town board.
Planning board.
Second, town planning board.
Has submitted. Motion second, this is for both or for independently.
I just basically did. Radford at this time.
Radford, okay.
And then we'll go through and. You just duplicate it and go on that way they're both covered.
Call them.
Put them off.
Uh Joey Anderson.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
I Angela Hawkins.
I can Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustafa.
Hi.
Tom Stevie.
All right, motion carried. So now we're gonna go on to the global. It'll be the same. See, somebody else wants to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'm stacking us.
Okay.
Motion second, call the roll please.
Joey Anderson.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Angela Hawkins.
I can Castro.
Matt Mustafa.
I'm Stevie.
All right, motion carried. So we're good.
If you do the the, now we're gonna do, now we're gonna do the site plan.
Yeah.
Well. Sorry.
No, I I got it. I got it.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Greg for all these.
We put the dirt before the horse. We had this one last time.
I'm gonna go, Greg, where's the part two and part three?
All right, so you need a motion for the final site plan for the global project.
So, second.
Motion second, call the roll please.
Okay. Uh Joey Anderson.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
I Angela Hawkins.
I can Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustafa.
Hi.
I'm Stevie.
Hi.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard what you said. I was like, we gotta get. We missed, we missed one. We fixed it. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Uh, yeah.
Referral, we're on a new business. A nine point seven, we have flown the board scoreboard, consider preparation of zoning optimization for short term rentals.
I I had the. I had gone through and pulled out some of the local laws that are around here and there and. I figured we had started at the beginning, so I had I had peanut, just give you the first page or two of above a number of them so that we could talk about. Talk about the purpose. Um. After the purpose, a lot of them are sort of uh. Probably uh easily, easily put together and we'll have, we'll have uh Greg and I can look at it and come up with with. With that, but I guess the question for the board is, for one thing, is it a good idea? Do you want it? Do you want to allow it? Uh if you don't, it isn't gonna matter because it's gonna happen anyway. I mean, there's no stopping it is what it comes down to. Uh so we we probably ought to be ought to be involved. Uh and. And the the one I kind of looked at as being. Pretty good purposes clause was the the town of town of Sodis. Uh. Uh most of that one looked looked uh. Looked fairly, fairly good in. And the uh. And as you saw, the the town of Catlin. Is working on this also. And they have a southern tier regional putting putting it together for them. Uh at this point in time.
So. I had a conversation, good job before the meeting. Um. I think you should regulate all rentals uh when I retired. Um. Five years ago, a couple weeks ago, but um. We were talking. Then about rental registries, things like that. Um. In the city, we had a rental registry program. And. Because there were so many rentals, absentee landlords, things like that. Also, we had an issue down there with. Once. The the only properties that are required to be inspected are multifamily um residential properties.
True.
Three or more. What we found down there that the most of the rentals that we were having issues with were. One and two family rentals that were legally converted into three or more. Or boarding houses, things like that. And the reason they were running, they were. Had a round registry and they they were in compliance, but they were never inspected. Now. We started looking at. Um. Airbnbs, we got on the websites and we're looking. And lo and behold, we had, you know, houses being. Portions of them being used for. Short term rentals. Um even a third floor of the property that. Shouldn't have been converted, was converted and being run out to Airbnb's. Um. Other areas, you see that. Um they take a. Barn in a house converted to an Airbnb or they. You'd be surprised what they do to what's not. You'd be surprised what they do to what's not, so I think rental registry as a whole is good. It is needed and um. I think the short term rental is also. Uh needed also. Uh because it's probably happening in our neighborhoods and we don't even know it until there is an issue. All of a sudden, you got all kinds of cars and different people and. Now they're parking in the yard and they have the parties and not say they all are that way, but. Um, you know, all of a sudden, the quality of life issues all of a sudden start changing and deteriorating to a point. And that way, if we have the. Rental registration for rentals and for. Oh, the short term, I think it's well worth it. It's well more work for you, Greg, say.
That's all right.
Yeah, Greg Greg has experience with this. From his time up at Black in his Glen also, so he can speak to. Wh- what. What they felt were the biggest problems at that point in time. But in that their their situation is a little different than ours being close to the lake.
Yeah, yeah, it was a just a giant undertaking in Watkins because when they started to talk about a law, there was already. We could go on Airbnb and find a hundred rentals already, so. And like you're talking about, I don't disagree at all either time that. A complete rental registry is a good idea, you're right. A lot of the problems we have with rentals are one and two family homes. Um, I think it's a good time for the town to think about short term rentals also because. We would in effect be getting out ahead of it, uh there's only. One or two that we know of that are actually operating advertising as uh short term rounds now. John is right, though, there's probably more um.
There are different websites too that.
Yeah, yeah, there's Airbnb and VRBO are the ones we really. Hit on the most and and there's only a few, but to get things going now where um. You know, we're not dealing with a hundred right off the bat. And we can reel in the ones that are. Operating um now would would be a benefit. Um, but I don't, I I don't think a complete rental registry is a bad idea either. So. And we're looking at bringing in uh. Our property man, this guy, full time, so. Keep him, keep him running, which is good.
Probably the only pushback we have is maybe some of the. Bigger. Run over landlords we have, maybe.
And I I I think in one that comes to mind is golf, you know, all of their.
Mm hmm.
One and two families, but on the other hand. When it comes time to inspect, golf is one of the better ones to deal with. They they open the doors, they let us in, they have direct contact to their property people. There's an issue, they're usually really, really good at. Working with us to take care of the problem. Um and that might help them in the long run too, you know, we may be able to catch some things before. They become an issue for them. Um. So.
Is that one and two family rental? Could be Airbnb rental after they figure that they make more money doing it that way or something like that, so.
Right, right, so.
And also with that inspection portion in the regulations, where they have one and two family every three years will help.
Exactly.
The the quality of life issues, the the.
Yeah, and one of the things, the craziest one we came across in Watkins was there was a a new apartment on Franklin Street. Someone was renting it out, but they weren't living there, they were actually subleasing it as an Airbnb. So, you know, their rent's a thousand dollars a month, they're charging the Airbnb. People fifteen hundred dollars a weekend and they're just raking in. All sorts of money and nobody, nobody knew the land, the landlord, property owner, no one knew that it was being advertised as an Airbnb. Um, so it's those kind of things that, you know, if if we're not looking, they can. They can get out of control. Luckily, I mean, not luckily, but here, you know. The tourism isn't as big as it was there, but um. You know, people were just jumping on the opportunity and it was out of control. So. Definitely worth looking into a. A rental law of some sort.
So I I do short term rentals. And the requirements that I'm under, emergency lights, fire extinguishers, inspections. And then because it's a short term, we're also hit with hotel tax.
Yeah, the the occupancy taxes required.
So to me, I think it's a great idea on the apartments and the rentals, I think it's a great idea, we go in there today, have smoke detectives. Is it a safe rental? Right. So, well, in the city, we had this program called Building Locks. We would import every night. The police reports, the fire reports, the code reports. So we could analyze and it was an analytic type of program. And also we would see that. Okay, the police department was here for. A tenant dispute. Or the. Court department was there for another investigation. But we show this is a single family home owner occupied, so. I spent a lot of time down when I first got there analyzing one of the issues and against still one and two families. They can run it out. They're not inspected. Um, they can be converted, make it to an Airbnb, so that's why I think the. They should be both done together. Like that, so I think it's. As we move forward. Um. As far as you, as the only point grows, um they need more good rental housing. For people moving into the area and it's maybe a good way to. Keep on top of this, so.
Is there much of a di- I I I'm just because I really haven't really looked into it. The difference between our two types of residential pro- or zones? Is there much of a difference in what they? What they say as far as being able to put a residence or a rental? In one of either.
I don't really see rental, double A is single family, A is one and two family. And B is uh multiple everything.
Yeah.
So real stickler ones would be the ones that are in that.
Double A.
The double A's. Double A and B would be the ones that would normally be that way. But if there was somebody that, you know, hey, I wanna. Split my house out and start running it and I'm in an A.
Days, being two family, that'd be okay, but it wouldn't be in a in double A zone.
That's on that.
So would we also have to look at the mother daughter type of situation too?
Um, you mean, well, if it's not your mother in the.
Right, so.
The typical mother in law apartment is not considered. That's 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 a single family.
Yeah, the reason for that is is when it's converted or say they put an addition on the house. Is that they don't have to meet fire separation requirements, things like that, because they're living as a one family unit. And when you give a certificate of occupancy. It'll say right there, it's like a mobile apartment cannot be run it out. Um, because it's it's a single family home, that type of thing.
But then when I sell the house off to somebody, then you're.
Well, they'll ask for a certificate of occupancy for the home. Lots of times. And it'll stay right in the C of O. I've done it before. Um, that C of O's are separate occupancies, state, there's some stipulations in there. And usually banks wanna see that in the lawyers to make sure that. What they have in the property is.
Yeah, sometimes banks will have a problem if you have a single family home that has two kitchens. They they will, they they may buckle a little bit about giving you a, you know. If your interest rate is 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 ten percent rather than fifteen, well, you got two kitchens, so you're fifteen percent, not ten percent. You know, because it's not a single family, that type of thing. Uh, that's where that's.
Or can be split into that.
Yeah, cause my my house has two kitchens. Where dad used to live. Is we had a, we had a, we had a mother in law apartment there there. Basically, so uh.
My Edward did, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I want, did you think?
Yeah.
So, but you we just address it through the building. Cross building code process and the paperwork for that.
So sh- should we? Bite the bullet? Greg and do a rental registration? And weave in the short term rentals in the whole thing? Rather than.
Rather than.
Trying to have two different. I mean, I I don't know if it's possible, the other the other issue, I the one that before I lose it because I'm old. Uh, I'm assuming you do not want. Short term rentals to 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 be issued a special permit. I'm assuming you don't wanna deal with this on a.
Right, that was, yeah, that was something that Watkins landed and avoided it.
I mean, I mean, here it wouldn't put the brake on, up there it probably put brakes on and everything.
You do it as a registration and not as opposed to permit that you gotta come in and register with the court office?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and and.
And the things you talk about are building code issues that would it would it would require an inspection and that type of thing.
Yeah, it's like the only thing we ran into ever like that skip was we found that uh. A person bought a house in Barrington. And we found it. Uh. Being advertised for rent for college kids when LeCom got built. Um. So we uh stepped in and were able to talk to the property owner who was a LeCom student and himself. Uh and just let him know, hey, you know. No rooming houses, no boarding houses, we're gonna be driving by and checking. And he was, he he was actually really receptive to it, ended up selling the property. Um, because that's what he wanted to do, he wanted to put.
Four, five or six or seven hundred dollars a bedroom.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I that I could see doing something like that, especially when.
Right, but he wanted, you know, he he wanted to turn it into a warding, a separate lock.
Yeah, ifa- ifa has that, that's a big issue in ifa.
So we were, that's the only time that's ever happened and and we put the. Put the brakes on that one.
But I could see too is if I had. I had bought. John's house or something like that and I wanted, I you know, hey, I want a little extra income. You know, I'll rent the other half. Rent out that that piece, that's the thing that.
Right.
But I I got. Logistics, I just hired me. As a upper management to cover over whatever like that and I need to play. Quick and I, you know, there you go.
Because I I need to get my mail there. And the addressing comes through the town horses assessment office and they will not. Give you an A and A and B because.
Yeah, they'll instantly throw up a red flag.
So in other words, there is ways of picking that stuff up.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
All right. I didn't.
That's that's the way to. It is because.
Sometimes it takes a little bit, but when we find out, we.
You got, I would assume we jump right on, but.
Yeah. Um.
You know, we 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 would, you know, and this this is not to prohibit. Rentals or A and Bs is to make sure they're done. In a. Orderly.
Well, you see what this city is going through with their. Like you say, slum lords and the bigger causes and stuff like that, they're going through down there. I could, you know, this is what happens, you know.
Well, they're trying to get a handle on it down there with their blight policy and all this other stuff. But the 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 other things you see that happens. Is as as that changes, is that three unit, that should only be a one unit, changes. There's people who need a place to live, but guess what happens? Guess which way they move?
Yeah.
They move north.
Because we don't have the regulations that the city does.
Right.
They do this. Slum lords will just. Move that to places where they can operate.
And I could see, I could see like up in Beret in the States, all of a sudden now you got nine cars in front of somebody's house that.
Yeah, the other thing that. It helps if there is a neighbor will call you somebody. Somebody help, yeah.
Oh, nine cars, don't drive by my house, cause my kids and stepkids and. Right.
I used to, I used to have at least five.
I was told that I had a parking lot in my yard too. With the state car and my two cars and my two cars and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's that's why my driver looks like a landing strip still.
Part of mountain field.
So tonight, we're just just discussing and throwing out ideas and. In another five weeks, I'm done working so much for a while, so I can. I grabbed a, you got the last driver, then I put it together when I first left.
So.
So I got some information out.
I say maybe we can get we can get some rental registration thing and we'll try to weave this. Weave this into it.
Yeah, I I think if we're gonna do it, let's let's do it.
Do it comprehensively and. See what we see what we get, cause this this will be allowed in basically any zone. The other will be subject to zone. So.
Yeah, so we do have that zoning piece that does kind of. Point. The uh multifamily stuff and and one and two family.
Yeah, yeah, we put short term rentals as allowed use in. Double A covers.
Covers it all.
Covers it all.
As it goes, yeah, from this is allowed in this zone and.
Yeah.
These running down.
So in to in the try to leave out double, the I the only double A I think is right here. I don't think we have, I.
Up here and then.
I I don't.
We use double A zoning for Barrington, that's P U D.
Yeah, one of the, yeah, I think. Yeah, I think both Barringtons are P U D, maybe Hunter's Run might be double A.
I don't know what that is. The only other one I think maybe is up on the hill here.
St Andrews?
No.
Oh.
Yeah.
Gotcha, yeah. Yeah, there's not a lot of double A.
No. No. So.
See, I know I I ran, we ran into that one time. Where my cousin had bought a house down in Heights. And we walked in, you know, he had all these plans divided into three. Code walked in and says, no, you can't do that, you can do two. And, you know, we complied, but it was like we he didn't know that till he actually.
Well, that's that's a lot, you know, that's where the first trickle down from uh. You know, the better regulation on rentals in the city, that's that's the first place that, you know, saw an influx of people who needed. A place to live.
Yeah.
So when we were doing Almyer Heights uh out of our office, we we saw a lot of that. Uh, we we didn't get too heavily involved just because we knew we weren't gonna take it over forever, um, but you saw it. For sure.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, illegal conversions, stuff like that.
Short term rentals could end up being a different assessment. Even though you live there, like the guy who. Heard this, he lives in the house and short term rentals it because he's a pilot and he, what does he end up in Asia or something?
Home for four weeks and then flies for four weeks in Asia.
So that's when he puts it out, so he could end up with loss of star exemption.
Oh, yeah.
It with the, you know, that type of thing, so it's just, and you know, his five hundred bucks star exemption, right? He'll trade that for the for whatever at this point.
But it's probably good that he brought that up, cause we wouldn't think that somebody would rent their house out. As an Airbnb.
Right.
Um, right, he's like ta- the tailor made situation, I mean, if I think if any of us were in his shoes, we would definitely.
Well, plus it's his home, so he takes. He looks for better people, I mean. Make sure, you know, that they're, you know, he doesn't want to destroy.
Trashed.
In a week or two, and I I think a lot of that has passed, I think Airbnb's changed their. Rules and have gotten rid of those type of tenants and then party houses and that type of thing, I think. But I don't know that we have that much of that here.
It'd be more the um. Like down Ocean City, you know, they had problems down there with the, they agree, B and B's not paying the. The uh rental registry and the the uh. Special assessment and all kinds of problems they had known there, so they they kept it pretty hard on them, so. We need to limit the number of people that can be in the Airbnb.
Yeah, and and.
The fact when it gets out of control.
The other thing is park. Yeah. To make sure.
We can limit. The number of people based on bedrooms and square footage under the property maintenance code.
Yeah, and that was, that was something that Watkins did. Do pretty good at is you had parking limitations, you had occupancy limitations. We needed to make sure they collected that room tax. I another thing was they needed to make sure that the building itself was insured as a short term rental and not just a single family home.
Yeah, we gotta remember to put that down.
There's another rider on your policy, says this is a short term rental, so. Uh, the fire safety stuff that's required by code for Airbnb was was adopted to their their uh. Uh. Law, you could also change it one more to a transient occupancy and even make them do a little bit more for uh, you know. Uh, fire escape map on the back of the door, exit sign, a second way out.
All the reason I know I'm now I'm gonna wanna buy John's house.
But yeah.
Maybe a good idea to get a copy of Watkins or some. Maybe a good idea to, you know, copy your Watkins system, look at theirs.
Yeah, we.
I've got it.
John's got it.
Right. We got it.
And then a real square, one John and I were talking about, one of the stricter ones in the state is a place like Skinny Alice, has a super strict, uh.
Well, that's strict, yeah, they say no.
I felt Watkins. They're, they're pretty strict about that.
Yeah, it, it, it's much better now, but it was a nightmare when it started.
I can imagine trying to get people to comply, it would be the, you know.
Because if, if you thought you were ready, you have to call, you, you, I had to perform an inspection, to say all the life safety stuff is in place. Then I had to notify the planning board to let them know that, hey, I have a complete application and I've done the inspection, this needs to go on the next planning board agenda, so, and we capped it at five, four, five rounds of meeting, so you're talking a hundred to start twenty, you know, twenty months of meetings to get, and then each one was two, it was just a it just backlogged it for years, but I was saved by the town horse ass and left, so.
You're welcome.
Um, one thing, um, board members, January is meeting January first. I don't think any of us can show up January first for a meeting.
It's a holiday.
Holiday, so we move it to the second Wednesday. Then Monica could. So, it'd be the eighth, January, probably seeing as the town board and.
Oh, it is.
Uh, probably, why, why don't you put if needed after that?
Okay.
We'll see what, what we have that's, that's on, since we can, we can control our, you know, call for things to come February rather than January and maybe just just, uh, skip the meeting, yeah.
Maybe, maybe, what's wrong with delaying it just a day or two?
Yeah, we can.
You know, instead of first, go to the third or something like that.
Well, then you're, she's Thursday or Friday. So let's, let's see what we got and.
So it's on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe. Hopefully we're not gonna be somewhere else. Get her off in school for two weeks, so.
You can, you can. Two weeks, man.
Yeah.
Maybe a while.
It'd be more fun.
See, I'm all happy, you know?
All right.
So you remember. They try to pull some stuff and and get it out, we, we won't make our guy happy, but that's okay, he's gonna do it anyways.
And right now we can, cause we have no regulations against it.
No, he can't, because we have no regulation saying he can.
Do it, okay.
Yeah, it goes the other way, it doesn't go that way. Or we, nobody's written an order to us that tells you, no, 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 we don't, it's impossible, it's an impossibility.
You can do what you can do.
Tell you only, they only tells you what you can do, not, not what you can't do.
Can we make a motion with, now it's, it's seen as a survivor?
Second. You've already watched it on our phone anyway.
I'm over here. It's all right, seems like a roll.
Okay, got me all excited. Okay, Joey Ankinson, Alan Curran, Amy Crandall, Angela Hopkins, Castro, Matt Mustakow, I'm Stevie.
Hi.
Amy.